Okay. All right. Good evening. It is six o'clock on Monday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole. For the record, we're, it is a hybrid meeting. We are in council chambers and on Zoom. I also want to remind you, if you're watching the show on television and for the audience members, from June seventeenth to July fifteenth, the main entrance of the municipal building will be closed due to renovations during this time. The municipal building is open to the public by appointment only. We ask that residents attend meetings via Zoom. For the council, for mayor and council and for the whole, we will continue to hold meetings in this room. For full details, visit city of Groton, correction, city of Groton CT dot com. And there's information there. There's also information on the website. That is the website. There's also information on Facebook. And I'll be posting additional information on my Facebook page as well. So, Court of Court, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Norris are present.
So, we have a quorum. New business referrals versus Police Department Vehicle Computers Chief?
Evening, Mayor and Council. So, we're looking to replace MDTs, mobile data terminals. Those are computers that go into the vehicles. We have five of them currently that are on the, either malfunctioning now or on the way out, as far as the drivers are concerned. We work with the IT department because any replacement has to be forward-thinking in that we're also looking at software replacement down the road for our records management system, which is the next-gen that we, we've discussed in the past in this body. So, any MDT that we buy, it must be not only work with what we have currently, but also then work with the new next-gen software. Now, that's one criteria. The second criteria was that we're going to go to a portable system for MDTs. Right now, they're fixed. The reason why we're going to go to portable is because it allows the officers to remove them from the vehicles, take them to a remote location, work on their records management reports, et cetera, that they can do from that remote location, and then bring them back to the vehicle again. Also, for security purposes, we could remove them from the vehicle and bring them inside, which we can't do currently. So, working with IT, they selected a vendor for us. That's Information Technology. The purchase is actually on a purchase agreement already, so that is similar to the bid process. And that would be in the amount. Now, I must apologize because I'm looking at the resolution here, and there are two different figures. The first one is twelve thousand one forty-four, which is in the top part of the resolution. But then, under the "Therefore, be it resolved," it says fourteen thousand one forty-four. That's an error. It's twelve thousand one forty-four. That's what we are looking for.
Okay. We can make that change?
IT also, so that's IT's preferred vendor. It's somebody that they, that they do business with based on the purchasing agreements that are in place. However, they also did look for a comparable system. So, they went to Patrol PC, which is another maker of police MDTs. And we went from a unit price of two thousand, excuse me, just take a look here. Approximately twenty-four hundred dollars up to three thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. So, there was a vast increase with their second vendor. Again, somebody that they do business with, that IT does business with, but in this case, the pricing was too much. So, we actually got two quotes from them. First one is twelve, is on the backup paperwork. It's first quote, it's twelve seven thirty-one. And that came in at a total of six thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars, and that's for one unit. We're looking for five. Okay. And then, the second one was six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-three cents. The difference was in some of the capacity as far as the software, the hardware was concerned. But again, we're going to go back to the original one that I mentioned, which is this ruggedized Dell computer. And we are looking for that twelve thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars.
Question from the Counsel, Counselor Sheffield.
What type of PCs were the other companies offering?
So, we can only buy what they call ruggedized PCs, which is things that will stand impact or some kind of carrying around type. Those were, let me just take a look. Those were Rhinos, Rhino Tabs. And again, you know, they're very similar as far as capabilities are concerned. Just the pricing in this case was more than what we wanted to spend on the units.
Okay. I was just wondering, as far as the quality of PC compared to...
Well, I mean, we're using Dell. Dell is a very well-supported system. So, I have no, you know, and I let IT do the, the, um, the criteria on this because they're also working on the back. And again, they're working in, in the foreground with next-gen. So, whatever we buy has to match, or has to have the ability to match up with that. So, as far as the technical end of our aspect of this, I wasn't involved in that. That's, this is directly from IT.
Okay. And IT is the ones that are going to be troubleshooting these?
Correct. Yeah. They do it right now. So, they're the ones that have identified these five MDTs as needing replacement.
So, what about the warranty as far as the PCs? Is there a different warranty plan set up for these, or is it...
Will it be the manufacturer warranty? But I don't have each one, each manufacturer warranty in front of me now.
Okay. And my other question would be, I guess, you only need five? Is that it, or will there be more?
There'll be more as we go through vehicle replacements.
Okay.
Because it's an all-in-one type step. It's a turnkey operation, so. But not until such time as those vehicles come in, they get built, we put in the light sirens packages. I mean, that's probably looking at, on a conservative estimate, eight to nine months down the road. And that's just because they only build police vehicles at certain times of the year, and that's it. You can't get them three hundred and sixty-five days, so.
So, the next set of PCs will be on the twenty-five budget?
They'll probably be on my exist, on my new budget coming up, before we get to then the twenty-six. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we're on the twenty-four for this one here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all for now from you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris? You're muted?
Yeah, gets me every time.
Thank you.
So, plan ahead. You could just help me understand. So, how many vehicles do we currently have? How many vehicles do you intend to have this new type of computer hardware in? And how many years will it take?
Right. So, uh, as we pointed out in front of council when we were talking, and town council as well, when we were talking about vehicle replacement plans. So, we're on a five-year plan right now with, with three vehicles every year. That's in a perfect world. But that would replace our entire patrol fleet and reduce the years on the vehicles down to approximately a three-point-three-two-year average age, as opposed to the over-ten-year average age that we're at right now. The reason why it's important to get down to the three-year age is because of the, the power train, the major repairs that are incurring with the older vehicles. And give you an example, I've replaced a transmission and an engine this year. Under the warranties, that wouldn't be an issue, but because we don't have warranties on these older cars, it's six and seven thousand dollars respectively for an engine and a transmission. The reason why it's, it's expensive and the reason why I can't go for a rebuild, because that's one of the questions that gets asked, is because these are pursuit-rated vehicles. So, you have to buy the pursuit-rated transmission or pursuit-rated engine. You can't vary from that. So, if we're looking at just patrol cars, then I have ten of those. So, there's ten of those in the fleet. And that's what we'd be looking to rotate through. For the MDTs, the, the soft cars don't use MDTs. We don't carry those. We do have a light and sirens package in that, but we don't have the MDT system that goes with those. The reason why is because honestly detectives and support personnel can carry regular laptops, such as myself, in a laptop, in a protective bag, and because I don't have to use it while I'm in the vehicle. It's not a, it's not a requirement. I'm not getting calls for ser, like, one of the things MDTs does is it queues your calls for service. So, at any time, I can go through the system and see which call is up, what that call is about, that call for service is about. And then, I can determine how many, you know, I can use it to determine location, how many officers I need, if I have to close roads, intersections, et cetera. I, I'm, that's the kind of information that I'm getting ahead of time. It's got mapping system. I can get that ahead of time. Something you just can't do with a radio. You have intimate, intimate knowledge of the town, but this puts it out there graphically so you can look at it and have a better understanding of what the issues are. So, I don't, we don't use that in soft cars, in the unmarked, again. But for patrol officers, it's, it's an important piece of kit.
So, in terms of hardware and memory and all that kind of wonderful stuff, so I think what I heard you say was to get to the ten cars, it may take three to four years.
Yeah. I'm on a five-year right now. And again, that's going to, but that includes our soft cars as well. But that'll put it, if we're successful in that, again, we'll reduce the entire age of the fleet. Because there's eighteen vehicles in the fleet. That'll retire, reduce the entire fleet from ten-point-six-two years down to three-point-three-two years.
So, I can only assume that what is being recommended and requested here has the appropriate hardware, memory, drive to handle any potential upgrades in various softwares over the next five or so years?
That's correct. So, what we're looking at here, again, forward-thinking, you know, IT has to be forward-thinking because they know this, this record system's coming down the road. So, we're looking at systems today that are still comparable with not only what we use, but also what's coming down the road in November, because that's when we plan, or October. But that's when the cutover may occur for our new system.
Thank you very much. We don't have questions.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council meeting of June seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, G.
Thank you, Chief.
Plane Department eight twenty-four. Wesley, come on up.
Good evening.
Go ahead, please.
So, this is the submission of an eight twenty-four positive referral from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the council regarding a, an easement to be granted from the city to the town on, at twelve sixty-eight Paquonic Road. That's property that's owned by the city and located in the town. And the purpose of that is to create a, an extension and connection trail between somewhere along the roadway on that parcel to be determined. And this is to authorize the mayor to enter into negotiations with the town, along with the attorneys, to negotiate the details of that easement.
So, this is a town project. They're doing it under a Community Challenge Grant. And they're working with DECD. Basically, they're going to extend the Paquonic River Walk up and around, and they're going to tie it into existing sidewalks. Right now, what they need from us is to do an additional sidewalk in that area. So, that's what this is for, to support a town project, which will benefit everybody. This is on GU property, in case she didn't get where that is. So, and John's working with the DECD. I told him I'd bring it to my council tonight. And then, if council agrees, we'll move it to the mayor and council meeting next week. And then, he'll meet DECD deadline in order for, to get approved funding. So, with that, I'll open up the questions. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Have we already asked attorneys about the liability of this? Because even though we're giving an easement to the town, it's going to be a sidewalk now on our property where there wasn't one before, right?
Right.
What are, like...
So, we have a sidewalk. And just, so, right now, we have no liability because there's a sidewalk. If you have a sidewalk, there's always going to be a liability, but it doesn't extensively, it doesn't, doesn't extensively increase our liability for that little piece of sidewalk that's there.
Okay.
Counselor Sheffield?
And the town will be funding the bridge, I guess, and it...
Well, it's with this challenge grant, yes.
Okay.
So, there's no cost coming to us.
Yeah.
They just needed our easement.
Easement, okay.
It is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is the premise on which PNC does issue, issue this to, as a favorable, with a favorable recommendation.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. Excuse my ignorance of knowing this. I mean, is this something that citizens already can access, or no? Am I understanding the gist of this?
Ask your question a different way. Ask, access what? There is, there is no, there is no sidewalk there.
See, it ends right there. So, there's a sidewalk here, and a sidewalk over.
This is South Road, right?
Yep. So, there's no side, there's a sidewalk here, and it ends. There's a sidewalk there, and it ends.
Right.
And they want to...
Did I answer your question?
The map answered my question.
Okay. Any, any other question or comments? Okay. Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council meeting of June seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Wesley.
Thank you, Leslie.
All right, Sierra. And since we have guests in the audience, we'll do the minor facade grant first.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. You guys all know me. I'm Sierra Patrick, Economic Development Manager.
Natasha Graham. And this is my husband, Michael Graham.
And she is the business owner of the new T-Mac Bodega that is on Bridge Street. So, today we have before you a minor facade improvement application.
Grab a chair, yeah? Okay.
Um, a minor facade improvement application for the business. Natasha has moved in to one oh five Bridge Street, and they've installed a new sign to the outside of the facility. I believe in the package you guys have before and after pictures of what that concept looks like. The sign itself is new. It lights up. They did all the work on the inside to make sure that that was compatible. We, they've spent a total of two thousand six hundred ninety dollars and sixty-six cents on the project and applied for reimbursement of up to the twenty-five for this project. So, I believe you guys have all this information before you. They've completed the permits, closed out on all that work. And so, we have met all the requirements of the current grant, and the EDC did approve the grant, provided favorable vote at our May first meeting, and you guys also have those minutes. So, today we are before you to present that information, request that this move forward, and also provide an opportunity for you to ask questions and learn a little bit more about Natasha and her family.
So, the sound is great, but if you haven't been down there to get something to eat, you really need to go down there and get something to eat. I've been down there a couple of times, and the food is very good. So, so with that, I'll open the floor for questions. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say thank you for opening a business in the city. We've been trying to promote them and promote this grant, and the more people that take advantage of this grant, the more people know about it. So, you know, we always try to get the word out. So, thank you, and I have not been down there yet, but I do plan on making my way down there. And I think, do we usually post these facade improvement grants on the Facebook page or somewhere to notify people, like this business?
Yes. So, after the review process, there'll be a posting, the kind of show of the award and everything.
And we're also going to be doing a ribbon cutting, too, right, at some point?
Coordinating with that, yes, some point.
Yep. And we'll get the, and we'll get the chamber involved and everybody else. We're going to make a to-do of it.
Yes. Big to-do. And thank you.
Any other, Counselor Sheffield?
Congratulations again. You haven't notified me coming through Stop and Shop that you're doing this venture as many times as I've seen you over the years. So, again, that's great that you're bringing this business here to the city, and I'll look forward to stopping by. So, best of luck to both of you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations. Ditto, ditto, ditto. Do you possibly have the hours of your business? You could say that now for the people who are listening in? Ten thirty to seven thirty, Monday through Saturday. All right. Good day to be closed. Great. We will be stopping in. Thank you so much for being here.
Anything else? Okay. I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting?
Oh, you have Paul's hand as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Norris?
Oh, that's good. I just wanted to thank Sierra. This is the perfect example of good ways that the city can impact the way we look, and the way we feel, the way we work, and the way we play. We attract businesses. But I also want to say this is another example of Sierra's interpersonal skills, that she could sit back and wait for people to call or read the emails and websites, where she actually takes the time and effort to seek out businesses that she feels would benefit from this program. So, I just want to thank all of you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council meeting of June seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you both for coming in.
Thank you for coming. Congratulations. We'll be in. Have a good evening.
Okay. Grant policy and procedure revisions? Jason, you want to come up? Okay.
All right. So, um, tonight we are, the EDC is presenting the policy and procedures of our grant program to this commission. We, over the, it is a relatively new program, but over the last couple of years of actually implementing the program, we've noticed a few changes within the policies that needed to be addressed. So, this is kind of that update, and I will, I provided a clean copy of what it looks as a final, but then I also provided the red marks so you guys could walk through that. And I'm actually going to work through that red line document tonight so you guys can see where those changes were. So, just quickly, under descriptions, one thing that we expanded within the second bullet point is originally this grant program only focused on our tax increment financing district, which really comprises of Bridge Street, Thane Street, and Paquonic. The commission thought it was, I, it was good to actually expand this to all of the city of Groton. So, moving forward, that's what we're proposing for this grant. We also discussed potentially applicants doing, showing a match of at least twenty-five percent. This was a discussion that we had at the commission level and then decided actually not to go with this option just with the current climate of some of the businesses and them actually behaving, being able to provide that match and still keeping this program kind of viable and, and, and gauge interest in the businesses. So, actually decided to do away with that at this current time and the emphases of this, and stages of this program. Under, still under eligible applicants, but on the second page, we did want it to be clear that the applicants are responsible to ensure that all required building permits have been obtained, that work is complete, and that they have received a certificate of approval from the Building Department. That is something that we, on the staff side, make sure we go through that process and check it off, but it is the applicant's responsibility to follow up on that. Typically, contractors pull the permits, but it is up to the applicant to make sure that everything gets closed out properly. On the third page, under minor facade improvement cost, we wanted to, we've added the language portions, the portion of the commercial property that is viewable from the public street. We just needed to define what that facade really meant, and felt like that sentence clearly identifies it, and you can see it throughout the grant proposal that we've updated that entire section. We've also, under frontage landscaping, that if any applicant is requesting reimbursement, that those plants must be annuals, annuals for this thing. Let's see. If we move, I'm sorry, I just noticed some of these are not numbered. But moving to the actual policies and procedures program, and under the fifth bullet point for eligible cost, we did just add the language that this is a reimbursement grant, just to make sure there is no confusion with our applicants of this program's purpose. Also, under then procedures, we just made it clear that we present the, the EDC bets the projects. We then come to a council meeting to present that, and then it moves forward to a mayor and council. There was just a little bit of confusion with the process, but we wanted to make sure we clearly, with the procedures, that we made sure we just clearly identified in this section. And then, lastly, we've also added a timeline and checklist to the, to this policy and procedures, and did a number of just formatting corrections throughout the document itself. Natasha is also here with me to speak to any changes.
I'll just say that we, we worked on this for probably a year, you know, going back and forth, pushing this through different meetings. And, you know, especially when it came to the matching piece, I, I think there was a lot of discussion. We went up as high as a fifty percent match and then worked our way all the way down. Almost all of the changes that you see here come from actual applications and potential issues, or I should say, applications that never came to fruition because some of the language before was a little too restrictive. And then, some other applicants that actually came through, you know, for, there was a few of them where we realized that work would not have been done if there was a matching component. And that, that's what really drove us to, to keep it, so that there is no matching component. The, again, the, the goal here is just to improve the city, improve the facades of businesses. And so, if even having a twenty-five percent match is going to restrict people from doing that work, then, you know, we don't want to go down that road at this point. But otherwise, I think the majority of the changes are to... Um but otherwise, I think the majority of the changes are to expand on what is eligible as opposed to restrict, you know, even just that definition of a facade. Originally, it was the front of the building, but there's many parts of the building that are viewable from a street. And if you're going to, you know, improve, for example, the side of the building, in some cases, more of that could be viewable from the street than the front. So we want to make sure all of that is eligible um moving forward. So I think a lot of it is just, you know, some of it's just common sense that we've missed on the first go and some of it was just trial and error of going through the program, but we, we think this is a better uh, better rules and, you know, uh regulations moving forward here.
Okay, I'll open the floor up for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you. I think these are some great changes. I think it's a great idea. You know, it was our first grant program. I, I think there's no way it could have been perfect the first time, so um. And I was going to comment on the frontage thing because I know that there were some business owners who have buildings that are kind of like kitty-cornered to the street, so the side of their building kind of faces the road, even though it's not the front. Um and the only question that I have for the uh plants and flowers. Doesn't perennial mean it comes up every year?
Yeah.
When you were saying it.
Means it dies, right? So should, that should be perennials, right? I'm not even a plant person and I was like, I think, I feel like that's correct.
When I saw it, when I read it, I was like, wait a second.
We meant coming up annually.
So you're right, that would be perennials.
Yes.
But yeah, I think these are great changes. I think the um, you added that checklist in there. And I think the formatting looks really nice and clear and easy to read and um, good job. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I'll take it. Never mind, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. I was going to ask about the plants and then I was just thinking as you guys were talking about. I was thinking, well, maybe if they do annuals, they have to buy them each time, so to make sure that they're actually buying them, that's what I thought it was for. So um, and what was my other thing? Oh, I just want to thank you for it. You said over a year. It's been in, in the midst of over a year, so I can really appreciate that because we used to do this all the time in nursing at a few places I worked at and just constant review, constant looking, constant correcting. So that's a long time to put in there and really appreciate your time and efforts on that.
And I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Uh plan of conservation, resiliency amendment? Thank you, Natasha.
Thank you. All right, so shifting gears to resiliency and our plan of conservation and development. So in section six of the P O C D, um it's titled, address community issues. And within that section, um I think it's like section six point two, it specifically addresses, I'm sorry, section six point one, prepare for climate change and sea level rise. So what we're proposing is that from twenty nineteen until now, all of the resiliency work that we have done, the creation of the um resiliency plan, the capacity building work um that we have done internally with staff, our outreach to um NGOs, that we actually update our P O C D of where we are in that process so that we actually are keeping track of what it is that we are doing um for current staff, future staff, et cetera. And then this will feed into um the update that the plan of conservation and development is typically updated every ten years as a state requirement, but this is just kind of giving us a benchmark of where we're at um five years into the, into the ten-year um phase that we have. So um I did provide the objectives that we've um identified from the plan. The um number one thing being to reduce stormwater flooding from impervious surface. And number two, the mitigation of impacts from the um urban heat islands. Um you will also notice a list of prioritized actions. Um within the plan, all these objectives have actions underneath them um to correspond to the activity, but we went through all of that and prioritized that with leadership. Um we did host it, um train, additional training to better understand reducing stormwater flooding um from impervious surface and the urban heat is- island impacts. Um we've connected with NGOs, so with the nature, um the nature conservancy, we're working on the Five Corner Stormwater Assessment Project. And then with the Eastern Conservation, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, we're doing rain gardens. Um all these are projects that, once you kind of piece them together, start to address that impact. Um and actually was a pilot for us to figure out um what projects and things that we can do on a staff level to actually start to address some of these objectives within our plan. And then we also did the whole portion of securing funding for this. So there's uh funding that is being secu- um that has been secured for the rain garden installation and then um for the Five Corner Stormwater Assessment, um all the consultants and all the assessment work. So we have got grant funds for that and then there's just in-kind expenses that we're doing to support those projects. Um the other thing that was um came out of our capacity building work was we were able to put together a project portfolio of all the different projects that staff is currently looking um at doing. Some of them are from also NGOs that gave us some suggestions of projects that we can consider. We do, um, that's not something that we're necessarily putting within the plan, but it is um a document that we're feeding off of it as well as the plan to actually start to put projects together and they actually go out for funding. Does that make, does that make sense? Okay. For the section six point one, I'll just real kind of quickly go through the strategies. So the first strategy is to establish a working committee to evaluate community vulnerabilities associated with climate change and sea level rise. Um this, not this specific council, but a previous city council did establish that working committee. They were initially tasked with the development of the plan, but given COVID, there were some challenges with that. So I'm asking that that committee's role actually be updated to doing the um, continue to assess the community's vulnerabilities, to actually develop projects that help with that grant writing support and that project coordination. Then, moving on to the second strategy, was to conduct a thorough assessment of vulnerabilities to climate change, sea level rise, including a detailed maps showing areas subject to potential inundation in the future. That is that twenty twenty-two community resiliency plan, so that is checked off. It also says um strategy three, create an action plan to prioritize actions relative to climate sea, climate change and sea level rise. The objectives and actions plan that were done within the plan, we then um prioritize those actions, so then this is kind of done at the current stage that we are at and looking at resiliency um projects here in the city. Um the fourth strategy is to object, is to address the objectives and recommendations from the plan and any other um issues that are associated with climate change and sea level rise. Our fifth objective is to establish municipal responsibilities and to designate a resilience coordinator. Six is to incorporate climate change into municipal planning and um op- and operation, operation procedures. This is something that is organically starting to happen as we're seeing all the impacts, but just continuing to push for that. Um next, we would like to continue to work with regional, state, and federal agencies and other organizations to address re- um issues related to coastal vulnerabilities. Next is then to pursue grant funding and develop conceptual um capital improvement program to balance the fiscal capacity and needs. And then lastly, is to consider increasing regulatory standards rel- um relative to constructions and vulnerable areas. And so um our, my request for you tonight is for us to update the P O C D, but this would allow me to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission on exactly what this update would be and then to host the um co- a public hearing um at a future date to go over this with the community.
Okay, we'll open the floor for discussion. Counselors? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um I just want to say, it does a lot of hard work and all of that, and I know that um it's super involved and there's like so many things intertwined in the plan of con- conservation and development. Um and when it comes to sea level rise, it's like so much information um and because we're right on the water. So I just want to thank you for all that hard work. I think people don't necessarily see the behind the scenes of we're trying to plan ahead to make sure that we're um paying attention and protecting the city from that. And um, you know, part of how we do that is our staff spending a lot of time doing this kind of work, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Uh Sierra, do you foresee um with the um the climate change, uh specifically, like I said, we've got tons of rain of late and certainly flooding uh has been an issue with all this rain due to the climate change. Um what steps do you think um that the council may need to address down the line um that, you know, could uh remediate, you know, those potential things down the line?
I think um, so we have identified that Five Corners is a hotspot because of how everything dr- um drains and just the geography of the neighborhood. So the assessment is actually going to give us a better understanding of the capacity of the stormwater pipes that are underneath, kind of let us know where those pinch points are. So I think as we discover what that is and really understand um the need for what needs to be done, that cost that's involved, that we just have to um better coordinate the infrastructure improvements moving forward and just finding that support. Um this is something that will lean heavy on the Public Works. I um do work with them in close relationship for this project, but this assessment is just of what we currently have with the recommendations of what we need to do. There is going to be a community engagement part to kind of identify um where there can be green infrastructure elements um throughout the community in that area, but then it's going to be up to us to really say, okay, these are certain projects we want to move forward, this is funding we want to go after, and then just continue to support that process. So at this point in time, there might not be a major ask other than once those community um meetings come to fruition for both projects, just being a part of that discussion, I think will be um extremely helpful moving forward. And then we'll definitely keep you abreast as we find out more information what those next steps are. Does that answer?
Yeah.
So other things that we're doing, uh we have an engineering study down at Jupiter Point, and we're going to be replacing the uh, the culverts that are there that flows water back and forth. And we're working with the property owners, Jason Property Owners, to try to get the Frag Mighty dugout and working with the state on that as well. So that's one part of that. The engineering study is also going to help with the stormwater drains there to address flooding down Jupiter Point. On Shore Ave, we're, so we're to, we're doing a Shore Avenue Seawall. The Shore Avenue Seawall is not about addressing flooding. Shore Avenue Seawall is a retaining wall and that's about keeping the road up. But there is a short wall uh just south of that that does have water come over during really high tides and bad storms. But more importantly than that, we have water that comes up through the stormwater drain. So we're going to put some tide flex valves, the, they're down at South Prospect, but we're going to put a tide flex valve down there, which is a, uh basically, it looks like a duckbill platypus, except it's uh vertical and the water pressure seals it and any water comes in will trickle out. And up at where uh Tyler comes down to uh Shore Ave, right across from the concrete beach, there's a, there's a pipe there that we're going to put a tide flex valve and that will help prevent some of the flooding due to water back up through the stormwater drains. In addition to that, we have an R F P, we have a bunch of RFPs, but we have an R F P that is going to do an engineering study of our entire coastline around the beach, all the way down to the north end of Griswold Point. And we're going to look at vulnerabilities there, uh specifically in the area that the city owns. One of the challenges for the short wall, I've had discussions with uh some people, one resident in particular, about how if we just fix that little portion of our wall, it's really not going to address the issue because the water will then come around the Sand Cows area. So we have to figure out how we're going to address the whole part of this. And uh one of the things that we've identified uh in the last year or so is that the pier there, that the Griswold Pier on the backside, on the north side, there's some rocks that are, that are, that have fallen out and we're going to, we're going to, that is also going to be uh revitalized, not as a measure of uh flood resistance, but it does take some tidal action and helps keep it from coming in. So all these things are things that we're looking at in the next couple of years that we're going to get started uh in those areas that are, that are uh prone to flooding. Any other questions or comments? All right, uh I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Sierra.
Thank you, Sierra.
Hey, Leslie, you want to come up? Well, do you, I mean, because these are your gu- these are for the reappointments? Okay. So we have uh three appointments for the Planning and Zoning Commission. One is a reappointment and two are upgrades due to vacancies where basically we'll move them from alternate members to permanent members. Cameron James is here, if you want to talk to him. Uh and then Colleen was just here uh just a little while ago and she's getting fleeted up fairly quickly, but there's a, there's an opening and so we're going to move them up. So uh with that, I'll open the floor to discussion or questions. Uh Deputy Mayor Depot?
Uh well, first on mine, the supporting documentation for Mr. James is, is someone else's name is on it. So I don't know if it-
What's that?
The paper co- oh, the paper copy is correct, but my electronic copy must just be incorrect.
Okay.
Which is, doesn't matter, as long as it's being correct.
Okay, so it doesn't match?
It doesn't, but my electronic copy is-
The other two match?
Old version.
Okay. All right, yeah, I don't know what happened there.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Um so I believe that this puts us with um two members on both economic development and planning and zoning. Um and I know that we've had comments before about that. I just want to say that I attended the last Economic Development Committee meeting and um in my experience, it's been helpful because it kind of builds a bridge between those two committees. Um and having people able to report to the other committee what's happening on economic development and planning and zoning uh seems to me that that would be helpful. Um and seeing it at a meeting, I think that is helpful. So um I just wanted to point that out and say I, you know, I think it's a good idea. Obviously, it wouldn't be good for the, both committees to be made up of exactly the same people, but um I don't think it's bad to have a, a person or two that are on both because they are so intertwined. Um and they two, they do totally different things. Um and it's a lot of work, so thank you uh both of you for being on both committees because I know that it's an extra commitment, so thank you.
So let me address this, let me uh use this as a segue. So in the past, someone brought up that there was a conflict of interest if you have somebody on planning and zoning and on the Economic Development Commission. If you look at the Connecticut General Statute, it does not, there is no conflict of interest here. There is no conflict of interest in any way, shape, or form different than normal conflict of interest that come in. So the fact that you have a member serving on two committees does not inherently pose a conflict of interest. So there's, and, and like the deputy mayor said, uh there's actually an advantage of having them on both those committees. So that's that. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris? I think I see your hand.
Yes, that was my hand. I'm sorry, I didn't have time to put it up. Um one, thank you very much for all those individuals to take in on these two uh roles. One, I do understand that there is not a conflict- One, I do understand that there is not a conflict, but I would also, um, urge counsel, and I know we do and I know staff does, to try to find as many individuals to serve on these commissions as possible. Um, the more people we have around the table, the better the conversation, the better fostering of solutions and for a productive way of moving the city forward. So I just wanted to put that out there. I do agree. But, uh, I think this should be a last resort and hopefully it doesn't become a, uh, a reaccurrence.
Okay. Let me use this as a segue. So for those of you that are watching the, this meeting, if you're interested in joining a board or commission, we could use you. We, we depend on volunteers to make the city run, just like all municipalities depend on volunteers. So if you're interested, you could call eight six zero four four six four one zero three. That's my office. Or you could call eight six oh four four six, what are you?
Four one zero two.
Four one zero two to get to the city clerk's office and we could walk you through, uh, the application process. There is an application online. Just fill out the application and your, uh, resume and express an interest and we would love to have you help run the city. So, thank you for your interest. Any other questions or comments? Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Since there's so much on economic development, um, there's vacancies on Economic Development Committee for anyone that would like to help us develop the city economically, help us, um, help our businesses to grow. Um, so that, that committee in particular has, I think, three. Does that sound right? Two alternates and one regular member. Um, so three vacancies. And you've got experienced people on there. So don't feel like you, when you join a committee or a commission or, you know, you don't have to be the star right away. You know, there's a lot of people who will help you learn the ropes. Um, Economic Development Committee, I think, is a good one because you really get to know the city businesses and, um, how the city operates. So, so just wanted to throw a pitch out there for that.
Well, and the other thing is, don't automatically rule yourself out. Oh, I don't know anything, so I really don't think I could, I could participate or I could contribute. You can. If you live in the city and you love the city and you want to contribute, this is the way to give back. Is, you can give back through volunteering, which is great, but you can give back directly through being a volunteer on a board and commission. So please consider it. Thank you for that. All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll take a motion to move these three to the mayor and council meeting of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved. Second?
Thank you so much.
We have a motion. Is, uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Counsel, thank you for being here.